She is ready.
Okay, we're live.
All right, everybody. Thank you for once again joining us for the third meeting. This is hopefully the last night, but this is a reconvening of the special session of the mayor and council, city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, state of Arizona. This is being held on Wednesday, April 28th at 5:32 PM. I will entertain a motion to come out of recess to reconvene this special session. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Frank for this motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 O's nay. Chair determines ayes have it, so moved. We're back into our special session on the budget. So, thank you, everybody, for the third night of this, and I will now turn it over to our city manager. I believe we're getting, are we on miscellaneous grants? Correct me if that's correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Before you do that, Mr. Mayor, I have, I'd like to make a statement.
Sure, Lou, go ahead.
I have to leave the meeting at 3:30 if, in case we go that long or past it. I just want you to know that.
Not a problem. Hopefully, that should work fine. Thank you, Lou, for letting us know.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Steve. Let's forge ahead on miscellaneous grants.
Okay, Ashley, do you want to put up miscellaneous grants?
We got her working hard.
Well, I'm glad somebody knows how to do this because two weeks ago I didn't know what it was.
I'm learning on the fly, so.
So you're in Fund 78.
Let's get there. Yeah.
Okay, now, I think a lot of these grants are familiar to you from prior years, and I don't think too much of it is, is new this year, as noted from dollars raised and spent in prior years. These are basically, basically grants that don't fit in any other category or department. But as you can see here, you know, library grants, bikeways grants, science center grants, all that sort of thing. Each and every one of these, the revenue equals the expenditures. So, so basically, they're a wash, and they don't have any material impact on the general fund and any other budget unless, of course, you already saw an expenditure in the general fund for a match for any of these. So that's pretty much it. If there's no questions, we'll move on to the next one.
If I may interrupt just a moment, I may have, maybe I should have called roll call since we reconvened.
By all means, do it.
Yeah. Could I, Ashley, have a roll call? I'm sorry. It's probably something I'm, I never, I don't reconvene very many, so let's.
No problem. Councilmember Lou. Councilmember Joni Giacchino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hansen.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Stephen Pocken, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joelle Landers, personnel director, Jesus Harrow, public works director, Alberti Chavet, police chief, George Castillo, fire chief, Joe Estes, city attorney.
Thank you, everybody. I got a little bit ahead of myself, but that's, sometimes I do that. Oh, all right.
Well, we got it done. So now we're in debt service for the wastewater treatment plant. And as you can see, it includes payments to WIFA for the solar loan and to the bank for the wastewater treatment plant restructure that occurred a couple of years ago. And unless, I think we went over this in some detail last night in wastewater. And so if there's any questions on the revenues and expenditures, I'm sure Carrie would be able to yield those questions, but we did discuss it last night. Okay. That's good. All right, let's move on.
Wait, we have a question. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Debt transfer in from reserves.
Did you hear that? Why was there a debt transfer from reserves?
Carrie, did you hear that?
It's not actually from reserves. It's a transfer into debt service reserves. It's that reserve amount that we have to add to the bank every year per the loan agreement.
It's for the solar, I believe, right?
For the solar loan, right? They want us to set a certain amount aside every year. So we transfer money from the wastewater plant into the debt service reserves revenue, and then we make that transfer in the bank into that account.
Thank you.
Alrighty, any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the youth fund. This fund's been around a long time. I think all of you are aware of it. And it was established from the sales of properties. I'm not even sure what year. It's been so long ago. I know way before my time. And basically, they're reserved for expenditures that are designated by the Bisbee Youth Council and approved by the city council. So, anyway, it's fairly simple.
Late 80s.
Late 80s. Okay, thank you. So anyways, you can see the principal amount. There's a budget for interest income, and in past years, they have done some fundraising. Looks like they're anticipating some fundraising this year and then a use of fund balance. And Carrie, I believe the fund balance on this is somewhere around 125,000.
I was thinking it was at 130.
That sounds like it.
130, 133, somewhere around there.
So, the corpus is nice, big, round number, and we try to get as much interest income as we can out of this thing to help the fund stay above $100,000 and also allow the youth fund some ability to spend that money as they may recommend for youth-related projects. Any questions? If not, we'll move on. Next is the Bisbee Fund. As you know, operates primarily from federal 5311 program. That's a state transportation grant for public transportation. And that's something we have to apply for every year and receive, and that forms most of what we have to operate the Bisbee bus. Obviously, there's other money that goes in there. There is some bus fare, and there is some Sego money that goes in there from the AAA fund, which is the area agency on aging. And so we do also, if we can go down to the spreadsheet, we do have to make a transfer into general fund. The 5311 does not come 100%. There is a match the city has to make to that. So there is a local share at $14,000, and then we're expecting to transfer $35,000 from the general fund in order to make that budget balance.
Quickly, I have a question. Shown in the revenue side is the other revenue at 80,000, and on the expenditure side is capital expenditures at 80. Is that for a bus or is, what is exactly capital expenditures? Carrie? You're muted, Carrie.
Sorry, I thought I hit that. That is for a bus that they expect to get next fiscal year. So if they basically are given the bus, I think there's a small match, but we have to record it as revenue, even though we're not actually spending revenue. We're receiving it and then, and then getting the bus.
Right, it's a, I still call it a wash, but I just wanted to clarify. Eighty shown up and then, and spent, what that, what was that, what that was about. Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions on that one? Okay, let's move on to the last tab, which is the capital improvements fund. And capital improvements fund historically has been funded from sales of surplus property by the city. That is not something that we do every year. And so it's not money that's funded every year, but we maintain those funds that we do get from the sale of surplus property in order to in order to fund capital improvements when, if and when we need them. If you go down to the spreadsheet, so we're showing reserves in the amount of 2,150,000. The 2 million, of course, is proceeds from the insurance for the city hall fire. And so that, what that really means is that we have $150,000 in the revenues. Now, that's use of reserves. I know the reserves are a little bit higher than that, but not a heck of a lot. We've put in the expenditures, senior center repairs in the amount of 150,000. We talked about those repairs last night when we talked about senior center budget because there is some roof leaks that we're getting proposals to repair right now. And we also will have some drywall repair that will take place after we fix the leaks in the roof. So I do not expect it to cost $150,000 at this point. But I would, you know, prefer to leave that figure at $150,000 at this point in case we run into something unexpected. And of course, none of that will be spent without approval by motion from council. So, so anyway, that's what that money is there for. Any questions on that?
I have one question. Lou, you were first. Go ahead.
Yeah, Joe.
Oh, okay. I thought that the funds for city hall was more like 2.1.
Two years ago, we recorded $2 million set aside by council. And so the fire happened before I got back here, so.
No, I understand that. That's why I was asking Carrie what was set up for that.
We did, we did set aside 2 million for the city hall, and then there's already 100,000 showing in general fund reserves. That's been sitting there for a while. I'm not sure what the purpose of that was for, but it was a committed fund balance of 100,000 in the general fund. So that might be.
That, that's probably, okay.
What you see.
That's, that's what I'm getting confused with. Okay.
Go ahead, Lou.
This is for Carrie. And I'm asking this question because I'm relative newbie here. In 2018 and 19, and 2019 and 20, under total revenue over expenses, all funds, it shows a negative value of 499, 405, and 272, 085, respectively. How did we cover those shortfalls in those years?
And I, I would have to go back and look and what funds those affected because it could have been partially the general fund, and it could have, you know, also been sanitation or, you know, wastewater, those, those ones. So they're, they're just basically covered with what we have in our reserve balance.
That's, that's where the money comes from, the reserve balance.
From reserves.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, reserves from not just general fund, but could be wastewater sanitation. Unfortunately, sanitation's negative right now, so we're borrowing from the general fund to handle that. But outside of that, that's the way I, correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, but that's the big picture. If you want to look at the general fund part, then go back to the.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, just to wrap this up, I guess it's always instructive to know after you've gone through six or seven hours of budget discussions, how much is it? And so this is the bottom of the budget right here. And so for every single fund that we just discussed over the last two days and into today, the total revenue, all funds is about 23 and a half million dollars, and the total expenditures is the same number. And of course, the expenditures anticipates the use of all, all of the current revenues or the revenues that we'll generate in the coming year, plus the use of reserves of about $400,000. So that's kind of where you are at this point. And unless we make any changes tonight, and I'm about to ask for one, then this is, this won't change by a heck of a lot, plus or minus. But I do have a request, Mr. Mayor. And because I was a little bit late into the game of budget development, I become aware over the last week that there was a wage study of some sort accomplished in the last year or so, and that already in the budget, when I got here, were raises, many of which we've been discussing over the last couple of nights. And so I went through today to see, because I got a spreadsheet from the personnel office with the information that you've been receiving over the past two days. And I have identified 11 city employees who have not been identified as receiving any adjustment to their pay. And I think those of you who've been around for a little while will know that whenever we gave a raise out in previous years, we gave everyone something. And I realize there's compression issues, and there's longevity issues and that sort of thing. Our longevity system's been in force for at least 20 years, and I think we've pretty strictly adhered to that. But I, I think as an issue of fundamental fairness, I believe that if you give people a raise, you give everyone a raise. And some are higher than others, but I took a look, and a pretty good average increase for this particular budget for those who are identified is about 35 cents an hour. And so if those other 11 people were to receive 35 cents an hour, plus or minus a couple of pennies, we would be talking another 8,000 to 10,000 dollars. I think $10,000 is not too much to spend, to be fair. So I would like to have that added to the budget.
Thank you, city manager.
By, by the way, none of this includes management personnel or department heads.
I mean.
I have a question, Steve, on that. I agree with you. Everyone should receive a wage, but it sounded like what was going on where the, that people were, it was either because of the minimum wage in order to keep up with that, or to separate the folks because of an increase in the minimum wage, and also to get people up to a starting point. So these 11 people, where do they fall in, into those categories?
Well, most of them are on the lower end of the identified salary schedule in the first place. By the way, you know, we talked a lot last night about getting up to grade. The grade was just set. Okay, there was a grade in effect prior to this time, which everybody was above. And so now, all of a sudden, we've got a new grade, and now we're worried about bringing people up. And, and I may be a cynical old man, but wage compression's been around forever. Every couple of years, we try to deal with wage compression, and every couple of years, it's back. And so what do you do? Now, here's what I have historically done, not here, but in another job I had. In order to avoid wage compression, when we gave a general increase, it was in cents per hour. It was not in a percentage. To me, percentages just further divide the highest paid individuals from the lower paid individuals. And so if everybody got the same cents per hour, then there was no compression, and there was no widening of the gap between the higher employees and the lower paid employees. So, so that's why I'm proposing that these 11 individuals receive an average increase of 35 cents. I have not discussed this with the departments. Joel didn't even know about it. And, but I, I just, you know, I went to bed last night, and I have been thinking about it all night, and I think it's fundamentally fair. I think you also need to know that all of your command personnel, supervisory personnel, and department heads are not scheduled to receive an increase in this budget.
You still didn't answer my question, though.
Well, I mean, I mean, I'm, I guess I didn't answer your question, but I'm telling you what I think. And I think a loaf of bread costs the same whether you make 12 bucks an hour or 20.
So if I might add, I may be wrong, Joan, just bear with me half a second. What I understood was a lot of the department heads put in for an increase for their employees because they were below the new wage minimum. Where maybe, where these 11 didn't get included in that. So all we are doing is treating those 11 employees the same as the other ones that we have approved so far, well, that we put into the budgets and say approved, that we put in so far, so that everyone gets a little bit of an increase towards that new lower number of where they are on the pay scale of the, of the job that they, they maintain. To me, that makes sense because I, in my long history of working where I did, we saw many disenfranchised where the, some of the younger sort of surpassing the older. It was a lot of different situations going on, but the more we can keep everybody moving on at the same pace, if we're going to move some forward because of the, of the lower or the new higher minimum, then everybody should, should, we should try to move everybody towards that at the same time. I know that the employee group's been working on a step system. I would love it, and you know, I was part of that on the civil service commission and, and was in favor of it, but we also have to budget. It isn't just a one-time thing like this. It's, that's a plan that will, will last for 10 years, and so it's a much longer planning. So this is a, this is the first step in trying to make things equal. Okay, I've said my piece.
Can I make a comment, Steve?
Well, let Joan, Joan.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Joni, because I'm still.
Okay. A couple of things that I would like to talk, to say. One, I would hope and would like to think that when you're looking at wages and increases, that you're looking at a base pay, and you're not including the overtime in that because overtime is not something that is consistent. And I will give an example of my job. I have a base pay as a teacher, but every year, we get 301. It's an extra money that the state, well, the people voted for teachers. It is something that fluctuates. So anytime raises are considered, it is based on my base pay, as all wages should be based on. And the other thing, and maybe I'm going to go out on a limb on this one, but I don't really care. I think that when we look at increases also, we need to also look at this improvement that's gone with it. Have they taken classes? Have they got a new certification? Not, you know, not just they did their job because that's what they're getting paid for. And I'm not taking away from anyone because everybody's done some great work here in the city. But I do think that that needs to be considered, and I don't, you know, I don't know that that is, so anyway.
I, I agree exactly with what you're saying, Joni, and that's my concern. It just sounds, okay, everybody's getting pay rates. Okay, the pay raises that we've done were based on compression. They were based on getting people up to a certain level, and all I'm asking is, are these 11 people the same?
I think that's a question for you, Steve.
Well, the answer is no. Okay, these aren't the same, but you know, when you talk about giving people a higher hourly rate because of wage compression, that has nothing to do with how they've done their jobs.
All right. Can you do it based on how they're doing their jobs?
Well, if, okay, so if we went strictly on merit, as I look at this list, well over half of the people on this list are here getting, that they're getting an increase or getting a raise for wage compression, retention. Yeah, about half of them, and a few to meet, well, about six to meet grade minimum.
Okay, okay, then.
So there's nothing about merit in here except for just a couple. I see two here that are budgeted merit increases, two.
You're not, I don't think you're understanding my question or I'm not coming across. And I, and I don't have a problem with increasing wages. But simply saying that if, you know, other people are getting increases because of this, this, and this, and we have people that aren't, and saying, oh, well, we're just going to give everyone a raise, just doesn't sit well with me. It just, it doesn't make sense to me, and it has to make sense.
Well, it, it makes sense to me because we are a team of people. We're 90 people who work together. And I don't believe in segregating, giving raises and not giving raises to individual people, especially when it's a minority. Minority, minority number of people.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Steve?
Okay, I'm gonna, now, recognizing people because if that's great, and so Frank, you're first.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Steve, I agree with you. I think 35 cents, that's, that's really nothing, but it, but it's the, the idea of it, and we want to keep, we've got people that are hardworking. We need to, to reward that. We've got a good crew here at the city. They do a lot for us. 35 cents an hour is not going to break our bank, and it's going to help them. So I, you know, and it's a compression thing, Joan. It's not about merit. You know, that's a different issue.
Thanks, Frank. Anna, I saw your next.
So historically, it used to be like 2% merit, and of course, that was up to each supervisor as to, you know, who got that merit. But it would be like 2% merit and 3% COLA. So everybody got the COLA, and then the next year, it would be 2% COLA and up to 3% merit. And, and that's, you know, that's just kind of the way it worked. But I know that even three years ago, there was a question during budget time on certifications, and employees get a bump in pay for all of their certifications. And at that point in time, it came up that the firefighters had not gotten any kind of a bump for any of their certifications. And so Daniel Duchan, at the time, was working on that and working, trying to get all the information from the firefighters as all their different additional certifications, and nothing ever came of that. So they, they don't get recognized for all the extra schooling and training and everything that they get. But I also agree that even if it is 35 cents, it should be across the board. Everybody should get equal across the board.
When was the, oh, Joni, you were next.
That was kind of another one of my concerns. How, how do we, I mean, it seems so random. I mean, on, in one department, they get 35 cents. Another department, they're getting a dollar an hour. This one's getting $2. I mean, there is no consistency, and that really bothered me last night after we got through all of that because it's like, okay, so does this person get the impression now that they're better because they got more? And I get, I get the idea behind it, the compression thing, but if you're not doing it consistently across the board, then that's going to cause issues also because then people get dissatisfied, they get very grumpy. And again, I'm, I'm speaking from my side of. And again, I'm, I'm speaking from my side of, of my employment because I've seen that happen where I work. You know, we had people get a raise because, you know, they did something else and it, it wasn't straight across the board. And I agree with that, with what Steve said too, giving a percentage. I'm, you know, Joe Schmo at the bottom of the, of the food chain and my five percent increase is gonna be two thousand dollars, but um, big head guy up here, his five percent's gonna be ten thousand. It's like, wait a minute, you know, that, that's very frustrating too. And I, and that was another thing that kind of gave me heartburn, but anyway.
Okay, Joan, back to you.
So the, these eleven people, have they had a, a pay raise any, uh, at any point the, in the recent few, or re- recent past?
I'm, I'm gonna, uh, defer to Carrie for any general increases in prior years.
I don't know which eleven people we're talking about, so I, I don't know.
Well, I don't have an issue with it. I just, it just doesn't make sense to me and I like it to make sense to me.
Well, and, and I'm, I apologize, but, um, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna name names on public.
Absolutely not.
And, uh, but I, it just so happens that I know most of these people. And, um, it, it just so happens that, um, they do good work. And so, um, you know, I, I would prefer to reestablish the system so that we would have when, when the budget allows, a general increase that would be nominal in nature. And then, uh, a system of merit increases, uh, as, uh, just as Anna had described a few minutes ago. So that if someone was an exceptional employee or, um, or, or we had to deal with compression issues. And, and quite frankly, uh, the cynical old man in me, uh, is, is not uh, not a real big fan of compression issues. And, you know, we got eight to ten here that are getting adjustments for, and the reason stated is for retention. Well, you know, a great way to blow retention is for those eleven people to quit because somebody else got a raise and they didn't. And, and, and that's a very personal thing and that's not my reason. But that's what could happen and then we're not solving any retention problems at all.
I understand all that, but the, the thing is, the compression thing did come up. So I, I don't have a problem with, with doing this. I'm just trying to understand it.
It comes up every couple of years, but what most people consider compression is just, you know, well, the guy with five years is making a little bit more than the guy with four years. To me, compression is where it's a wide gap. Or where a person who has been here five years is making a wide gap more than a person for ten years in the exact same job classification.
Look, well, the, the increase in the minimum wage is what's causing a lot of the compression.
Well, that's not really compression. That's just meeting the minimum wage by meeting the law.
Yeah, but, but you're also looking at how much the next person up is, is making and whether or not an adjustment has to be made there.
Well, bottom line, Joan, we could argue about this point for the next five years and it will always be a problem.
Oh, I know. I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm not against it. I'm just trying to understand it.
Okay, so eleven people, about thirty-five cents an hour. And that's, uh, you know, that's a eight to ten thousand dollar price tag.
Lou, I see your hand. Go ahead.
I agree completely with you. Uh, our people are our most valuable resource, especially in tough times like this. And if it's ten thousand dollars that we're looking at to add to the bottom line, that's only four one hundredths of one percent of the total budget. We can afford to find the money to pay those people that money.
Right.
Thank you.
Uh, Lou, I never thought about it in those terms. Steve?
Thank you, Lou. Um, yeah, it's. I would love to see it just a straight cost of the living increase. Um, what we did last time was not a percentage, at least when I, last time I ever was involved in it, was we took the total amount that we were, that, that one or two percent were, was and split it evenly across everybody, which is like a pers- you know, so the people higher don't get more, the people lower to get less. Um, unfortunately, we're not at that point of doing cost of living. This is more of an issue, um, at least from what I heard from Steve, six or seven of these eleven are about, again, about this, um, um, getting them up to where we are classifying them as the minimum of where we are. Uh, uh, leaving, you know, five or six people out. Um, even thirty-five cents an hour doesn't seem like a lot, but, but in somebody's mind, uh, their, their coworker does and they don't, it, it does raise, uh, an issue. I'm, I'm glad this is addressed and we're only, you know, if it was fifty or sixty thousand, it should be a much longer discussion in my mind. Um, and I'm a, pretty much a budget hawk, so, so I'm okay with it. I don't know, I'll give everybody a, a shake of a head. Um, if that's something we could be put into the budget. Um, and then again, this is, this is the maximum. We have a chance to go back and, and, uh, tinker with it a bit. So, um, I just kind of wanted to, you know, I hate summing it up, but seems like I do, so.
Well, then, then, um, that's all I have, sir.
Alrighty, I think we.
Uh, as I've been saying, and I obviously have something that I wanted to review. Um, the first night when we were on the, uh, general, uh, fund, uh, revenue. Uh, unfortunately, my computer trapped out and I missed the entire thing. So I had a question on, and that was the reason I asked the question I did last night. Um, ambulance subscriptions. Why do we not have anything there?
Which budget is that? Which?
On the general, uh, general fund revenue.
Oh, okay.
Just for services.
Okay, um, that was, uh, the discussion on that and, um, fire inspection fees was that, uh, those, um, funds were a step, well, those line items were established a couple of years ago. Uh, with an entry into the budget and nothing, no, um, subscriptions were ever established or collected. Uh, and same was the case in fire inspection fees. Um, but, um, I, I will have a comment on, on, um, inspection fees, Mayor, when Joan is finished.
Uh, be- because the ambulance and subscription fees were, uh, approved in August of last year. August eighteenth. And we have a fee scheduled for it.
Correct. And, and I, I asked Joan, to be quite honest, I asked our new city attorney to go over that subscription service to make sure that legally under his, um, um, definition of what we were doing. And he asked that we put it on the side, so that's why it didn't continue at that point and and now that Ashley Jo is with us, um, if we want to readdress that and want to go down that, then we wanna make sure under our current city attorney versus our past city attorney that we're comfortable of doing that same program under the same direction that it was set before. So, Joe, I, yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, and if I could address and try to kind of clarify some things and.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, when you ask three attorneys the same question, you're probably gonna get three answers. I, I talked to Jim Ledbetter about this, uh, and, and got his full information and, and things on this. The, the main issue here was is that because of how this works and with the Department of Health, that we would have to have a, a Department of Health, uh, sign up on this. And Jim had told me that he had had discussions with an individual at the Department of Health and originally they had pushed back on this type of subscription program. But then at a certain point that they said, okay, I think it's okay. And he asked for that in writing and they never provided it to him. So that was my, my initial main concern is that we don't have any, anything in writing from the, the Department of Health that says that they're going to okay this and, and without that, I don't feel comfortable putting the city in a position of potential liability and, and, and running into issues with our, uh, you know, potentially with, with Medicare, uh, contracts and different things like that. So that was my discussion with, with the mayor and with Teresa, uh, Coleman at the time that with, without that buy, without that acknowledgement, it, it makes it really difficult and I've tried to reach out to the department myself. You know, unfortunately, right now they're super, uh, focused on this strange thing called COVID. And trying to get them to, to address anything else, you know, and sorry, you know, they're, they're, they're dealing with COVID and they're rolling out. Uh, you know, the recreational marijuana program all at the same time. Uh, so trying to get them to, you know, to, to make some time to talk about an ambulance subscription program in Bisbee has been difficult.
No, I understand that.
I'm saying that, that the, that the program's completely dead or that it won't have some, some ability to come back in the future. But right now, because we don't have that, that information in that, in that, uh, that sign off, it, I don't think it was appropriate to try to include any funds in, in the, in the general budget for that when it may or may not even be feasible to do.
So, thought up at a council meeting or anything? Did I miss a council meeting that it was discussed? Because this is the first I'm hearing of that, that there was a problem.
I don't think there was necessarily a, 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 a problem. It, it was when it rolled out. It, it is on me, Joan. I asked him to say, are we legally good with this? And when that came back, we pulled the program off and then in hopes, you know, things have been more than in disarray. I, I would be perfectly honest, I would be willing to push it forward down the road. I just didn't wanna, I personally didn't wanna see it in the budget. I don't wanna build something in that we don't know for sure, so that's kind of where we are.
I, I agree. I, 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 all I need is an explanation.
And that's why we're here to, to make sure we clear. We need to all be on the same page, that's for sure. Anna, I saw a hand. Do you, do you have something?
When this was proposed on the ambulance subscriptions, um, some of us were, a couple of us, were very, uh, concerned about it because it just didn't seem right and it, well, obviously, if there's no money in there, nobody participated. It's a great idea.
Okay, I.
I could not hear what you said.
Think I got part of it. It's really hard, Anna, you just have, you kind of drift in and out, but it, I kind of heard some history on that one.
Okay, no, what I said was, when this initially came up on the ambulance subscriptions, uh, you know, a couple of us were uh, concerned about it and the fact that nobody's really bought into this program, it just looks like it's a failed idea to me.
All right.
Uh, that's not true.
So.
Didn't, nobody bought into it because nothing was done because there was the problem with DHS. That's not in saying nobody bought into it. It was never established.
It, it was voted on, I know, before my time and, and was rolling out as I took office and so.
Right, and it's when they ran into the problem apparently.
Well, and then I, I started this, I just wanted to feel very comfortable myself as the mayor that this rolled out correctly. So that's why I asked the Joe to look into it further and, and it all kind of got stymied, so. I, I hope that's understandable. Um, I maybe over, I could have brought it all to, to council that point, but I, I just there was a lot on the plate at that point and I'll, I'll apologize if I, if you think I, I should have and I'm sorry I did.
No, I, I, Mayor, I'm not talking about it not coming to the council. I just wanted an explanation as to why it wasn't on the budget. And the explanation is that we don't have a, a signed, uh, commitment from DHS, so that's fine. That's all I want. Just explain to me why these things are done.
So, I will say one thing about the fire inspection fees. I didn't decide it was coming out or in. Let, let me just move two seconds, Steve. Um, you know, I come from that, uh, that background and, and yes, the fire marshal is very important. Um, they are the ultimate responsibility to make sure that our buildings and that we as public are safe when we go into a, 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 you know, a public building, a, a business, which I consider public once you move in. The whole idea of, of, of putting that burden of inspections on to a business bothers me a little bit in respect that for many, many years, we did that. The only time we, we came down on these pe- on a business or somebody else that didn't, um, come in, come, into compliance. It, to me, it's much like a billing permit. You know, if, if you don't meet those requirements or you go outside of the laws, then, then yes, we have the punitive method to, to say, okay, you need to, to, you know, remove this fire hazard or else, then, you know, that, that keeps the public safer. But just as a standard operational procedure, I, I think that's part of, of what we, what the businesses pay for in taxes to get their businesses inspected. It's a courtesy to them and to, to, I always used to go into a business and say, I'm here to help you because I don't, you don't want a fire because if you do, it would really hurt your business. And when you approach it that way, they were very much saying, well, show me what I can do to be safer. And when I would, I got ninety-nine percent compliance. If you go in and say, I'm here to do your business inspection, it's gonna cost you a hundred and fifty bucks. It doesn't set the right tone for what I would want to do as, as an inspector, but that's me, that's where I am, that's my thought on, on it. If we want to, to start charging our businesses to be inspected every year, um, that's a, a perfectly legitimate, it's in the, it's in the the, the new regs as, as we say, so, um, that's something I would like to visit overall, but I'm giving you my little two cents. Um, Steve, I know you wanted to interject, but I, I beat you out on that one.
Well, you know, you're the mayor, so, um, but, uh, I can't, I still kind of wish I could have said my piece first. Um, because, um, after we met on Monday night, the, uh, Fire Marshal, uh, Mr. Richardson and, uh, Chief Castillo and myself, uh, had a meeting. And, uh, cuz, uh, uh, Mr. Richardson felt that, uh, maybe we should be doing something, uh, and charging a fee for it and so, uh, uh, the chief and I tasked him with doing some research on the matter. Um, and he came back to us with a recommendation, uh, this morning. And, and that recommendation was to, um, charge a fee based on uh, ranges of square footage of commercial buildings. And, uh, uh, starting with smaller buildings, uh, at twenty-five bucks for, for an annual inspection. And then fifty bucks for the next range and the next range after that is seventy-five bucks, but ninety-five percent of the buildings he would inspect are fifty dollars or less. Um, on an average of a hundred inspections a year, uh, we're not talking a significant amount of money. We thought, um, if council was, um, willing to implement, uh, the fee schedule that, uh, uh, and allowed Jim to charge for, uh, annual inspections. The, uh, that we could, uh, put about ten thousand dollars in revenue, uh, in, in the fire inspection fees. Now, that's, that's a nominal amount of money, okay? Um, but it does represent, uh, that, as, I, I think a small commitment, I, twenty-five dot, I mean, if we were contemplating a larger, uh, fee amount, it, it might not be quite as good an idea as it is for a nominal fee and, you know, we even had some discussion over whether uh, Jim's time was worth more than twenty-five dollars. I don't think the point of this is Jim's time. I think we're gonna put in the time whether we charge it or not. Um, but, uh, it, it represents, um, charging a, a fee for a valuable service that will do everything that, uh, Mayor, you just said more.
Thank you. I wasn't aware of that and understand I have been retired for over tw- twenty years, so. I, I probably fee schedules have changed since I left, but.
That's why, that's why I tried to go first.
Well, you know, sometimes I, you know, I, I have the, uh, bull, over, I guess I'll do. Uh, I'm not married in any one of these things and that, to me, is much more reasonable than walking in with over a hundred dollar fee on every single one. So, so great, let's, we can visit that afterwards and put that in if people like, I know. I'm, I'm willing for other comments, I've spoken enough really to say, to tell you the truth, I know, yeah, Frank, go ahead.
Frank, you're muted.
I'm muted.
Frankie, mute.
Hey, alright, I was gonna say, I think it makes sense to put that in, that we ought to have some value for an inspection. And it's a minor amount, if it, it doesn't cost anything, doesn't mean anything, you know, so. Uh, I think it's totally reasonable to do that, it's not an outrageous figure at all. And, uh, you know, it helps defray some of the cost.
Thanks, Frank.
Covers the thirty-five cent raise.
There's, there's our man, it sits there.
Craig Matus.
Yeah, there you go.
Engineer, engineer.
Uh, any other hands? Uh, so Joan, is there anything in the, uh, other parts of the, uh, you, the general fund that you wanted to address tonight, or any, anyone else first?
Well, uh, it was just that first page that I had missed, so, and that was the only questions I had on it, so, thank you.
Sure.
For indulging me.
Thank you, alright, anyone else that I see would like, before we adjourn and let this kind of, uh, you know, come out as it is? I, again, I know I talk a lot, but I just wanted to let you all know. I had, I, I have dealt with this whole six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we were gonna get from the feds. How was that going to be dispersed to us? Um, were, were we gonna get the full amount, was Governor Ducey gonna intervene and, and take some of it, something like he did before? And so I actually put a call into Senator's, uh, Senator today and she actually called me back and I had to talk to her, it's, it's the American Rescue Plan. And she said, absolutely, it is written into the bill that, that the passer will be directly and there can't be any, um, funds diverted outside of what should come to local government. So I, I, I feel a whole bunch better about that, talking with her for a few minutes today and, and some of the other issues that we have. So, so, um, you know. Uh, it's all about now that we set the budget and eventually, well, this is the maximum and we'll finally set it after some public hearings. Um, I think that, uh, then it's all a matter of managing the budget and that's where we throw it back to our, uh, illustrious city manager. So that's the end of my little last two, three, four minute speech. Um, anyone else like to say anything before we adjourn, uh, the budget hearings for this year? I see no hands and I, you know, I just want to say thank you, everybody. Uh, it was a, well, I would say two and a half night um, situation and I think hopefully the public feels good. Um, I think we should feel good, uh, this is a, a doable and reasonable, um, um, situation uh, that we're in, so I will entertain a motion for, uh, adjournment.
So moved.
We have a, a motion to adjourn by Joan, a second by Anna. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 O, nay, chair determines ayes, have it. So moved, thank you, everyone, have a good weekend and guess what, we'll see you Tuesday, seems like.